Let's see who we have. District one.
Yes.
District two. Let's just go.
He's got his mute on.
He's got his mute on, okay. District three.
Here.
Got.
District four, I see.
Here.
Easter. And of course, Joe Strulie is here. And District two is here.
That's it?
District two is here.
That's right, yeah, District two is here, okay, alright. Uh, and we have, uh, staff here, you wanna?
Have, uh, Taylor Harvey, county administrator.
Dave Whitaker, county planner.
And we also have some guests from the press.
Wayne Russell had to, maybe you both were there.
And
Bob Smith.
Bob Smith.
Bob Smith.
District one.
Alright.
Alright.
Alright, uh, we were, we were sent, uh, a workshop agenda. You wanna? You wanna, no, you wanna, you wanna go with that, wanna follow the agenda, basically?
Yeah, what I took away from y'all's meeting, excuse me, last month, is y'all wanted to look in two different areas. The first one would be planning for, a plan for planning. So that's a look at what y'all want to do in the near term, the midterm, and, and a long term. And the second thing on the list is how you would use your economic developer to help execute that, whatever y'all come up with. It, it's pretty cut and dry, what you've got in front of you. They're not sequenced in any kind of order. Just reached out there and grabbed a few things and, and put them there to help guide y'all's discussion. And again, it's y'all's discussion, is to where you wanna point to county and how you wanna get there.
Just to, uh, let those who are here and might be listening, what this agenda says, number one, as you indicated, uh, number one is a plan for planning, and it's a rather broad, uh, piece of information. It says, define the priorities, priority areas for directions of the county, and these may be economic development, public utility expansions, education evolution, land purchases, fire rescue parks, et cetera. And refine, to refine these, just to, to scope, the scope of these desires with a conscious view of, uh, tax rate explosion, staff limitations, even if you hire, um, consultants, anyone has, uh, anyone has to monitor, monitor, basically, essentially. And, uh, establish a specific number of, uh, and study it will take to get this, what's that number four, whatever that is.
Yeah, that, that was just a thought of maybe four things to start with.
Okay, number four things to start with, okay. And, uh, be careful about saying what won't work or anything like that, you're leaving it open for discussion, basically. Basically. Uh, any board members have any, any, any problem with the, with or want to make some comments on that, that item number one, plan for planning? Any board member?
No, I think it's, I think it's laid out well. I appreciate, uh, Mr. Whitaker's efforts to put that, that down and get us going in a good direction here.
Okay. Strategic plan for entire county growth beyond, but in conjunction with what the IDA has for that area, when you say that, you're you're looking at that in relationship to the comprehensive plan, right?
Well, the, the IDA has a strat plan.
That plan, right.
And it's, it's a five-year look. You gotta look at that, use that with, with what you're thinking about tonight, and use it to enhance or what have you, and complement the, uh, comprehensive plan. And that's just the thought. Strategic plans sometimes work, sometimes they're just a a drill of questions and wants and desires, uh, but it is a facilitated look, which puts somebody in the center that, that helps direct and invoke a conversation. Is what I've seen, right, wrong, or indifferent, everybody wants to move forward, but nobody wants to speak up and say, where do we wanna move forward? You know? Is the, the highest priority gonna be economic development? Or is it gonna be sewer and water expansion? You know, they do complement each other. But if you're gonna go down that route, let's, let's pick sewer or public, public expansion. Look at the water portion of that. You can only punch so many holes in the ground where your comp plan talks to surface water, in, in very broad terms than that. Uh, is that where you wanna go? Let's look at utilities, expansion. Quit punching holes, and we've gotta have a water source. So do we do surface water? Do we reach to Chesterfield to see if they'll expand to us, or do we reach to Prince Edward and see if they'll expand to us? You know, there's a lot of variables that go with, with this thought of where you wanna go. But the key is, this group of people needs to make a decision on where you wanna go. And it's, if you look at the third item, fourth item there, it talks about a one-year view, a three-year view, a five-year view, and a 10-year view. And that's where y'all need to start. To provide the staff with some guidance is to, what are your priorities to move forward? If it's going to continue to be in education, are you just gonna stroke a check and send it to the school and, and live and die by their thoughts and desires? Or is there something really substantial the county can weigh in on to help move that down the road? If you're looking at land purchases, you know, where are you gonna purchase? For what reason? How much you gonna get? How are you gonna buy it? Are you gonna establish bonds? Are you gonna go to the bank and borrow money? You're gonna take what's left into reserves and, and put a down payment and hope you can sell, say for the IDA, some more parkland so you can continue to pay the bills on that? Fire and rescue. We, we've got a, a, a large volunteer force here, but is that enough? Do they have the right equipment? You've got a 20-year plan on replacing the equipment you've got, and there's real no, really no mechanism to pay for that, other than we were taking money from the the landfill and increase the fire department's budget each year by X number of dollars. Some years, that X number of dollars will more than cover the, the vehicles that are, are looking to be bought in that specific year. Some years, it comes up short because those, those pieces of equipment are very expensive. When you buy those equipment, you have to maintain it. And those are just the big ticket items. You've got the small ticket items, which aren't that small. Whereas you get volunteers in, you need to equip those folks. You know, Sean and I can't use the same air pack. I'm gonna take the fire tonight, give me your air pack, and you get the one tomorrow night, so you get it back. Oh, Mike, Mike wanna clean it. I, I've had a runny nose, something like that. So you, you've gotta to look at what's the breadth of that fire and rescue. Is it time to hire a fire marshal? Somebody to be over top of all five of these fire departments and keep them pointed in the same direction? And hopefully, get rid of somebody infighting that may or may not be there. So there, there is so much that needs to be accomplished in Amelia County, but you've gotta put your feet on the ground, dig in, and start somewhere. And I think that is the thought behind this exercise.
I agree.
Comments, board members, please?
I think that's very well said, David.
I have very well put.
I, I think that, uh, based on our current situation, what we're looking at, um, we really need to start, as, as we've kinda talked about in the past, not officially, but is the economic development, um. You know, when you talk about expanding like the water and the sewer utilities for, for general population, um, I have some numbers I, I wrote down from somewhere, so basically, for every $1 in taxes that a, that a citizen or that a household pays, they require approximately $1.30 of services. A business, for every dollar that a business pays in taxes, they only require about 30 cents of their services. So in looking at just the simple math there, increasing, increasing, uh, um, homes and lots, all that's gonna do is make us have to raise our taxes because the average household uses more money than what they pay in. So we really need to, uh, strive on this economic development, and in a controlled manner. But that's the only way we're gonna be able to pay for anything and keep our taxes at a nice low rate.
Alright.
I, I agree with that, Sean. I mean, I think from a from the way I would frame it, though, is I think I have three priorities that I'm interested in. I kinda tried, I think I threw up here on the screen where you can see them, I'm not sure. Uh, but education, fire and res- fire and rescue, which I think, um, Mr. Whitaker had some excellent comments on, and then parks and recreation. And I look at, I framed it as business development, trying to get a little bit more precise and just general economic development, but I look at business development then as to how we anticipate getting there. I mean, I don't think we're doing business development for the purpose of developing businesses, but it's so that we can fund our other priorities, uh, in the county. Uh, I, Mr. Whitaker, again, I think you did a really nice job summarizing that from education. I think you've definitely heard, as you started off, that that's one of most of our priorities. I look at where we've met this year, the requests that the school boards have had. I do think it's their, uh, job, along with the superintendent, to define the direction and what they need. Um, so I'm not looking to get involved direct specifically with what, anything more there. And so I think the fire and rescue where you were talking about is exactly right. Um, of the two, rescue frankly concerns me a bit more because I don't see it being able to keep up with the demands, uh, as much as the fire even has. And then Parks and Rec, I think what I would like to see there frankly is, I, I'd like to ask Glenn to start putting together some plans for what the needs are. I feel like we've probably operated Parks and Rec with what can they do with the money they've been given in the past? And I think I'd like to see them, as a department of, of the county administration, put together their own plan for where they'd like to get and present that back to us, uh, along with some feedback from us. Uh, and sorry, last comment. I really liked your, your idea around the, uh, fire superintendent, not something I'd thought about, but you know, it's interesting, when you think about the other areas of the county, we've got a clear person getting in charge of, just like Parks and Rec, we could, we could ask for their plans. The way-
You losing?
Yeah, something.
We lost you, Joseph.
So, wanna?
He lost us. He lost us.
He, he lost us.
So. So the, the, the fire, um, most of the counties around us, I could be wrong, even volunteer, they've gone to a countywide chief position, which is a paid position, just for that reason, to kinda eh, eh, the, everything these days is more demanding than it was 20 years ago, uh, training in, in, in any service, you know, upkeep, maintenance, and it's kinda getting to that point where it's hard for volunteers to do all of this stuff and keep everything in a line like. Um, there again, that's, that's another cost, that's another burden, um. I think the fire and, and rescue both is something we need to look at, and that could be, that could be in itself, in, in like, uh, the five-year view that, that David was talking about. Um, kinda breaking it down and seeing what the needs are now, what we think they're gonna be, um. I, I personally have a feeling that we are gonna have to go with paid fire at some point. I don't think this year, I don't think next year, but I, I just, I see it coming down the, the pipe that it, um, Palatine's already done, they have day crews, um, Luisa does, uh, you know, several of the smaller counties around are getting paid guys during the day, and it's just, it's just a matter of time, but it's something that we need to be financially prepared for, because when the day comes, it's gotta be paid for.
I read a study a couple, three years ago, and it looks like just to, to get coverage similar to what we have right now, you're talking about $7 million a year.
That's right.
And that's a, that's a huge chunk of money.
Yes.
Uh, you know, we're 33, 33 to 35 million dollar a year income. Seven, and there's one heck of a chunk of that.
And, and that would be, I think that would be with full 24-hour paid staff. But, but yeah, it is, uh, I, I think at a minimum, it was like one and a half million, if we went with day crews.
One day crew for the county, and somebody in charge overseeing everything. You're right, it's about a million and a half bucks.
I think it'd be interesting if we could, we could get some information, maybe from some counties that have transitioned there. Like, I hear what you're saying about where the final goes, but I'd like to see if there's any counties that have successfully transitioned, you know, what do the interim steps look like to get there? You know, how, how do you get between the now and the seven million?
Okay. How do you get between the na- the na- well, what's already out there? And where we wanna get?
Yeah.
Right, I hear what you're saying.
And Palatine right now-
Yeah, I feel like there has to be some counties that did it successfully. I don't, I'm sorry, Sean, I don't know if Palatine was successful in the transition or, or they just got there, you know, but anyway, go ahead.
No, but I'm just saying, I mean, they're, they're a good, a close neighbor to, to definitely look at.
Like counties, for example.
Right, right.
I, I hear what you're saying, comparing apples with apples, and, you know, budget-wise, the whole ball of legs, yeah.
Uh, Goochlin, Goochlin is a hybrid. Goochlin has some paid.
You know, uh-
Oh, I didn't know Goochlin did, but that's a good, that's a good example, too, Ben. I, I see them very similar from a path of us.
I've got to compliment the schools on, uh, putting forth, uh, Dr. Harper and that group put together, we, we had good dialogue, and they talked very openly and frank about didn't pull any punches, and we as a consequence, we got, have a very good relationship with them. They pretty much came together and, and, uh, it looks like they've solved a lot, some of the pitfalls that were, that were there initially. And, uh, that, that relationship, I think, and, uh, you know, encouraged them basically, essentially, to say, don't let us tell you what you, what you need. You tell us what, what's, what's needed. And then, then we'll, we'll try to, try to get to, see how we get to where we need to get to in order to, uh, that again, and this is what, this is kinda like, this is kinda like what you had in mind with Glenn, isn't that right, uh?
That's exactly what, that's exactly what I was gonna say, Mr. Harris, is I, I think if we set the priorities, I don't think it's then for us to be the ones that have to come back and determine how you, how you get there, like there should be leaders in the administration. Schools, is schools is a perfect example, yes, with Parks and Rec. I struggle with where that responsibility falls on, on fire and rescue. Um, and then, I know we haven't spent as much time talking about the economic or business development, but I think that'll get in the next section, and in fact, hiring the economic development director is probably that, you know, our next step around that one. I think, you know, I, I just happened to have had four on my list, uh, already. That's the ones that I campaigned on. They, I liked Mr. Whitaker's, uh, comment around four priorities. I, I do wonder, is there any, is there any board member that have another priority that we haven't talked about thus far? Or are we pretty well aligned on these four priorities that we've so far discussed?
I am definitely aligned. I actually thought that I was sharing my, my screen by mistake when you put that up there.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I couldn't see your- I didn't see yours, I'm sorry.
No, I'm saying, I thought I was sharing my
Oh.
when you put yours up. I have exactly the same four bullets.
Yeah, I, I agree as well.
I think we're on the same sheet, sheet music at this point, you know what I mean?
That's, that's great. That's a wonderful starting point.
You keep a note, uh?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
Can you hear me better now? I just changed my audio.
Yeah, it's much better.
There we go, okay. I was going through the camera by mistake, sorry.
So that, uh, under, under the plan for planning therefore, what do we need to do there?
Uh, keep letting, I don't know what you're looking for.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I think that too, and then I wonder if we could then, you know, in future planning sessions, kinda devote maybe one session per topic. You know, we could do a joint planning session with the, with the school board or administration and talk, talk about theirs. We're not actually giving their direction, obviously, but needs there. You know, have Glenn come into one meeting along with anyone else who's appropriate for that, um, you know, and, and dive more deeply into the Parks and Rec, and you know, we could do a joint meeting with the, with the IDA, and once the economic development director's in, to dive into that as well. But I think we need to then give those people a heads up, let them have a little bit of time to start developing. Mr. Whitaker and Mr. Harvey, I still start a little bit with the fire and rescue piece. Can you give me your thoughts on who's best to kinda lead some direction around that? And I love what Kent does, I'm just really hesitant, uh, to throw his name out too much, because I'm not very clear about whether that falls, how much of that falls into his role.
It really doesn't at all.
Well, it may not, but we need a belly button for each and every one of these things. And Ken's gonna say-
Exactly.
throwing him under the bus, but he's just the best situated to, to do the research and the groundwork for that. That's my opinion, uh, you know, unless you've got some fire chiefs out there that are willing to dedicate their time and be able to cross some of the disparities that are, are active between some of the fire departments. I think he makes a very good neutral party to try to bring that information together.
I would agree.
The, the depth of his expertise may not be there, but having volunteers trying to work this drill is not going to work. At least you can threaten, take him out behind the building and whip his, whip his backside. Whereas the fire department guys, I can't do that, because they're all bigger than I am. But I would think Kent would be a good belly button for that. Just my thoughts, Taylor.
And the other thing to keep in mind is about 10 years ago, there were, there was so much trouble within one of these departments. The state came in.
Definitely.
Jimmy Birch led a group that did a study, and several recommendations came out of it, but one of them was to have a quarterly meeting with the sheriff's office, with dispatch, fire, all of the chiefs, and rescue. And that has done wonders. Everybody at least talks once a quarter and, and finds out what the others' issues are, and has resulted in somewhat working better. I think maybe, uh, that is actually coming up tomorrow night. Maybe we should ask, uh, see if we couldn't get that group to go back to Jimmy Birch again, to sort of get us started in the right direction.
That's, that's a good idea.
I like that.
We can bring it up, it'll be obvious to meet tomorrow.
Okay.
Bring it up and so everybody will know what's coming.
Looks like what we're doing, uh, Mr. Fredrick, beginning to put some belly buttons in.
Well, I, I think that's key.
Yeah.
And if they can give you a, a broad stroke vision for their department or these particular areas, then that will help you develop some priorities to get them there and put them on the spot. What are y'all's priorities? But it's tough for Taylor or myself to reach out in broad stroke each and every one of these things. Alright. I, I don't have the time in the day to do that. I'd be perfectly honest with you. And my guess is Taylor's a lot busier than I am. So, uh, getting ownership of these is paramount. And getting them to understand what you folks are wanting them to do in the beginning will make the end of it a lot easier.
I agree with you with the need and the concern. Do you feel that by signing, let's say, school, school superintendent for that one, Kent for fire and rescue, Glenn for Parks and Rec, do you feel that portion at least accomplishes what you're describing?
Well, I think you got some very intelligent people there that are capable, uh, if they're given the right guidance on what, what the plan is. Because you can't get specifics from these folks. You probably could from the school because their hierarchy is set up for that. These other organizations are not set up that way. Hence, again, there's no real belly button for fire and rescue.
I got you.
For business, whereas Glenn is a good belly button for Parks and Rec. If he can find the time in between everything that he's got going on to come up with that plan. The last plan that I received from Glenn, he was working with the schools with Alan Vernon, and the plan came back is give us X number of dollars a year for the next 10 years, we'll have a million dollars and we'll put it to good use. That's not a plan.
Not a plan.
Good luck with that.
Well, now, I guess, I guess-
I agree.
I guess my question, uh, maybe if, if, for example, we're able to nail some, I don't mean nail either, but put together personalities or persons with these, each of these areas, for example. Then in order to assist them in getting to where they need to get to as well, as, as far as developing a plan. And then, like you said, I know Glenn is probably busy also, but what can staff do? What can we do? What, what, what? Can, can we hook them up with the right folk? You know, there's some folk who are already doing you, you, you understand what I'm asking?
I understand what you're asking, but expertise-wise, in-house, no, there isn't.
Okay, so.
Not that stretched so far. Uh, you know, you're getting ready-
Like a long-
You're hiring, gonna hire an economic developer, and that might be a really good goal for the economic developer. And hopefully, they'll, whoever gets hired will have the where-for-all and the expertise to do that. We've got, and I'm not knocking our staff by any stretch of imagination, and we've got homegrown talent that's never been anywhere to, to look at something strategically from a, a bird's eye view. We've got folks that grew up through the ranks and understand the minutia of a situation without having a clue what a big picture strategic look and, and, and set priorities are. That talent is not few and far between in Amelia County. It's just not readily available for, to tap those resources in Amelia County. Because-
That's accurate, and I don't, I don't take that as a knock on anyone either. I think you're just being very transparent, and, and I think several of us have said the staff is frankly also overworked as well, so I agree with your point. Maybe what we need to be able to do then as a board is be prepared to find a way to fund some, uh, development-type resources in that space, and like, I'm sorry, I can't remember the gentleman's name that you mentioned for fire and rescue, but you know, we may need to be able to, to say we're gonna bring in a, a consultant who's had experience in this type thing to assist us in developing a plan now that we've agreed on our priority area.
And, and I think that, that's a very reasonable thought pattern, uh, is, is to go out and find someone who's later in their career, or maybe finished their career, that has an extensive background in how Parks and Recs should be run and what, what you can do with the community. You know, it's great to put on a piece of paper, yep, we want a, a four-ball diamond complex- You know, it's great to put on a piece of paper, yep, we want a a four ball diamond complex with an Olympic sized swimming pool in the center of it. And all we need is 50 acres of land, but that's not a plan. That that's that's a pie in the sky. That's a pretty thing to have. But, you know, can you
That's a vision.
It's a vision, you're right. And and not a very clear vision at that. So but somebody to
That's supposed to be.
Somebody to evaluate what we are, where we are, and where we want to go. That's realistic to a population of 13,000 people.
I mean, we may not have anybody in in a local, you know, on staff or locally that that can do the kind of strategic planning, you know what I mean? And someone with that process, but the wheel doesn't have to be reinvented. That that expertise is available.
It it is. And it doesn't have to be a strategic plan. It just needs to be a a realistic plan. You know, you you look at a realistic plan and then you go strategic after that. You start getting into weeds and you start pointing and making directions of. But you got to have an overall view view of what you've got and a real good thought on where you want to be. And I think that expertise is out there at a very reasonable price.
I think I think some of that expertise in our community. And we could do what other counties do and start using committees to get things done and getting more and more community involvement to start to try to think through some of these things. Let them do some of the work and then bring it back to the staff rather than the staff doing everything. All right, there's people out there that want to help.
And there's people out there with the the background and the knowledge for each one of these areas. It's 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 a process of finding them.
Well, the first part in finding them is advertising the fact we're interested in finding them. If we put the word out and we're serious about it, I think people will sign up.
I don't know how many people.
To say we don't need help from consultants from time to time as well. I mean, we we'll need that too. But I think we can get a lot volunteer participation from the community if we if we try.
Well, add to that, Mr. Scott, and that is the fact that they see that we are serious about this thing.
Yeah.
You know, and we want to do this thing in a very systematic way. And they see that we we're willing to invest some time and depending upon the resources that are that are needed. I think some of these folk might might come out of retirement or might see this as an opportunity to to do some things, you know?
Yep. And with the oversight from members of the board, it will take some of the parochialism out of it. And and you you'll get ideas from all directions. But you don't want to overwhelm the system either where you're trying to herd chickens through a 20 minute conversation. And it takes you two or three hours to get there. You've got to be wary of that.
Right, right.
And we can't and we can't do everything all at once. But I I think these four areas that we're discussing, we should try to pick apart and try to come up with one or two things in each area that we absolutely absolutely want to do in the next one year, five years, 10 years, and put them on the table. And, you know, then we have to talk about, is it realistic? Can we do it? And what's it going to cost? And if we say, yeah, we want to do it, then then go off and look for the expertise to make the detailed plan. I mean, we have to dream big. Then we have to plan aggressively. And then we have to implement it responsibly and continuously. We can't just bounce from thing to thing with no clear direction of where we want to go in each of these four areas. We started with the schools this year going in the right direction. I think we need to continue working so closely with them to understand what they need and to make sure that they get it. But I I I um vary a little bit from what Joseph said. I think we ought to be more involved. I think we ought to be very clear with them what we expect for additional monies we give them. I know we can't tell them how to spend it, but we can tell them what we want as a result.
Well, I agree with that, too. I I was trying to draw that same line that you just articulated. So I I don't think we're disagreeing. I um I'm aligned.
Okay.
But you're very fortunate now because you've got someone that's driving that train over there that's paying attention to what you have to say. They're not just standing out there holding their hand out saying gimme gimme gimme. At least when they're getting the gimmies, they're giving you good reasoning behind the gimmies. And that's something that you haven't had in the past.
No, we're very lucky to have Dr. Harper. She's a true partner in this thing.
That's true.
But don't fall completely under that spell.
No worries. But if we could pick a few things in each area, we don't have to dive into each one tonight, but if we could, if if we come out of today unified, this is what we want to do. Not in detail, but just in general concept. And people believe that we're unified, that all five of us want to do this. Maybe some of us don't quite want to do it as much as the others, but we agree it's something we need to do. And we do it responsibly and not too fast. Put it all on the table, tell everybody what we're doing, be transparent. I think we're going to get more support from the community than you would think. In in expertise and people willing and people willing to roll up their sleeves.
Yeah. And that's why I asked the point earlier about, you know, is there anything, anyone disagree? Nobody disagreed with the four. And then I asked if anyone, you know, had any others, and they said, no, we're all aligned with the four. I I feel that this is a very unanimous, uh, you know, proclamation of these four. And I think that, as you said, can be very motivating for the community. I'll I'll take your suggestion and and just, oh, yes, and I agree. I I, you know, I'll dive into the fire and rescue one for a moment. I I think our goal there is maybe a little bit more clear. I think the the initial goal is create a workable plan of how and when to transition to paid fire and rescue. You know, so I realize that's a plan for a plan, but I mean, I think the real thing we need right now is a plan on how to on how to get there. And um, you know, then, as you said, we we figure out, we start implementing, and that implementation is certainly not going to be immediate.
Yep.
I think that one of all is most likely to need external help.
Yeah, let's try. Let's try to work together with the five entities there and the five or six really with fire and rescue all together. One of the things we can agree on tonight is that we're going to take pick a number, six months, nine months, whatever it takes to put together a really comprehensive plan for what we're going to do for the next 10 years for fire and rescue. In detail. We could take as much time as we need to make it to make the plan. But if we all agree that's what something we're going to do, we're going to work with them, we're going to we're going to consider funding what they need, you know, if, of course, if we agree with it. That's that's a direction.
I'll throw out there, I'll throw out there nine months. I I'd love to see a firm plan of that by the end of Q1 2021.
Perfect.
Doesn't mean I'm right. I just go, I like your idea. Let's start. Let's get something established. So.
Yep.
Hey, should we? Should we add the sheriff's department in with the and just do it as public safety or emergency services? We we've we we helped them part of their 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 plan this year, but I know that they have a bigger plan and vision, too. That we can't.
Yeah, I I'm okay with that. I don't I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I'm okay with that.
I I think you're overextending if you put that that other component into there. Fire and rescue is is uh it's not a complete organized entity the way the sheriff's office is a complete organized entity as it stands. I think they should be planning.
They're integrated with with the dispatchers and I mean, they they work together all the time.
Well, let's throw animal control in there at the same time then. Because that falls under the law enforcement portion of the state constitution. The the animal control typically would fall under the sheriff's office. So let's go ahead and put that in. If you start and you expand this thing where you've got 40 people trying to come up with a plan with $30 they're wanting to spend, you're going to end up with 15 cents worth of bubble gum when it's over.
Well, we could still encourage them to come up with their own.
Well, absolutely.
Yeah.
I I wouldn't mix them together. But I would I would tell him, you know, one, that's what he should be doing as it is. And I think the way Tommy's been working with it for the last couple of three years, he's formulating a plan. It's coming together. Maybe if he sees these other folks that get their plans solidified and start seeing action, maybe that'll light a fire under the young sheriff's backside, and he will do a little bit better job of his planning and bringing it together. You know, it's
Well, I agree, although I want to I actually, and this is my first round, I want to say, I actually thought the sheriff department brought a really good plan and well grounded to us. They'd done a lot of research, uh, you know, and so I both agree with you. And the reason I lean toward not putting them in here is I think they have the leadership and can get that done. I don't think we as a board need to direct more in that space. It's also a separate constitutional officer position. And so I'm a little more hesitant pulling that in as well for that reason.
Well, a bug in Ricky's ear would be a good thing. Hey, this is what these folks are doing. And the benefits are going to be good. Rick, you might want to think about doing something along these lines. I think that coming from one of y'all is probably a really good thing. And he'll be on the train at the same time.
That's different than making it formally one of our priorities. Yeah.
Right. Well, again, it can be one of your priorities. I just think you would be remiss if you put it with fire and rescue. Yes, they share dispatch and they share a couple of other things. But those are very minor parts of the overall operation, I believe.
They do have their own organizational values.
You know, you know, while we while we are saying that we are going to zero in on these four areas, uh, one of the things that I I did observe during this last budgetary process is that we encouraged a lot of dialogue. We had we had the dialogue. And in talking with them, we got a bit more out of our thing. We got because not only did we listen, but they listened to us also because we said we only got X number of dollars and so forth. But I I I think we're going to see more dialogue if they know that this process is going on when we're zeroing in on these four
Yep.
areas. You 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 understand what I'm saying? And that dialogue, it's even if it only happens at budget time to begin with. You know what I mean?
Been trying a while that people are talking more and more each year, and things have gotten a little more stable each year.
Right. And and
And that's this hopefully will kick that can instead of two inches down the road, it'll kick it a foot and a half. And then the next year, maybe they'll kick it three feet. But I think it's the right direction.
Yeah, because then then when they come and we talk with them during the budgetary process, you tell me why you need, where you're going with this.
I need to I need to get all my people regulated on their pay.
Yeah.
Well, hey, this is what happened. We screwed this up 20 years ago, and this is what it's going to take to put it in. And by the way, I need X number of dollars. That's how you go get money for a budget. It's just hey, my people hadn't had a raise in a long time and they need to fix it. That's not how you do that. And we've been trying for year after year to get these folks to understand that kind of stuff. And I think this process will help that tremendously.
I agree with you. That's what I that's what I was trying to say, where I thought he did a good job of really putting the facts in there and and the structure. And then he made it easy for us to to support that because it was it was so well grounded. Yeah.
When he gets really good at it, you'll be he'll be making you think it's your idea, the magic for him.
Yeah.
He's learning.
That's okay. I look forward. I look forward to that.
So we're going to keep fire and rescue separate. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's that's what you're hearing.
All right. So if we stick with the same four bullets and can we pick another one and come up with something we agree on? What about schools? What's what's our plan for schools after, you know, we just did something huge for the schools this year? What what's next?
I'd like Dr. Harper to tell me. I mean, when I say tell me the dialogue with the with with her and and her her folk in the school system.
Okay. So maybe so maybe a a an action on the school topic is for one or some of us to get together with Dr. Harper and maybe even a couple of school board members and toss around some ideas and and come up with with a you know, a plan.
With with a plan and that that that's where I am with that.
I I think right now, I I mean, although I supported, the schools are kind of in neutral. I don't, I mean, I don't want to speak for them, but I mean, they are struggling just to get kids to come back to school and parents want their kids at school and can't send them. So, uh, I mean, the schools are the next year or longer. It's it's kind of the unplanned plan, I would say. I think the vision that they had in the spring got hijacked really fast.
So I agree. I agree. But that doesn't that doesn't mean we can't be planning for three years down the road.
Oh, right, right, right. For lo- long term.
Yeah, the the engagement and the conversation and and like you said, Dr. Harper is is a a step above a lot of what we've seen in the past. You know, you plant your ideas with her. Once the turmoil starts to settle down, because it's not, like Sean said, it's not going to end in 24 months. But I think you'll have, uh, with sidebar conversations, you'll have her ready to, oh, yeah, to come together with what her vision is going to be at that time because she'll know what the base is again. She doesn't have a clue what
Right now, she's got to back up 10 yards and punt. And right now
Right.
So that's what's got to happen. And you understand that.
And it's not throwing the schools out of this at all. It's just the realization of the situation that, hey, you've been engaged as one of our priorities. We're not going to forget you. So get your stuff together, then come see us.
So why don't we
I would make a suggestion, though, that, oh.
You're probably going to say what I was going to say is why don't we let, instead of trying to put words in her mouth, why don't we ask her what she thinks about this?
That's exactly where I was going to go. I I would suggest that the I was going to suggest specifically that the August planning session for this board be focused on schools and have a kind of a two part goal. Let Dr. Harper and members of the school board come in and talk to us about their existing plan and vision. So I agree with Sean on it's probably been hijacked a bit, but they do have a plan. We've talked about it at a really high level, but I think a workshop format would be a great way to get into a little bit more discussion of it. And then the second, I think August would be a great opportunity as they're getting close to going back to school by the time this will be on the calendar to talk to us about their current um return to school plans. Um, not for us to critique it, but just, you know, as great partners of theirs, trying to be involved and aware.
I think you ought to reverse them because they're not that far away from getting ready to go back to school. I think I think August
And I've been working with Dr. Harper. I've been talking to Dr. Harper offline quite a bit as well on on this. I mean, so I I she's doing a really good job on it. I I think they'll be in a good place to come and talk to us at that point. Anything they don't have figured out, I mean, it's not going to be her fault. It's going to be based because of the situation and the fluidity of it, but it'd still be good for us to know that.
Right.
We could send them an invitation and see if they can if they would like to do August.
Yeah, because I I think I think August is going to be very tough for them to do.
I I agree. I agree with you.
I think Sean's idea of an invitation, because she'll do a bang up job at your August meeting, briefing you on where the status is for the school. She does a really good job on that. But to put something else on her plate on the tomorrow, if we were to call her and and go this route, that's just another thing that she's got to worry about for August when she's trying to open the school back up or a bunch of schools back up.
I don't disagree with you, but I want to make sure what I what I was suggesting comes across clearly. I'm not suggesting that she come and present anything new. I said, talk us through their existing plans that they've already developed for the future earlier this year. I was, I'm trying to be very intentional that it be stuff like she already, I know she already has presentations on that. And I know the board's already settled it. So I think it kind of establishes a baseline for us to understand their existing plans.
Right.
I very much do not want to create extra burden on her. And you're absolutely right. It is an invite. It is an invitation. It's not a demand. And so if she disagrees because of priorities, she certainly can. I respect that.
I think we're underestimating her, but I think it's her option. We should we should put it out there what what we'd like to talk about. And if she thinks it's too much, then just ask her to give us the update.
Invitation will be extended and she can let you know exactly where Invitation will be extended and she can let you know exactly where, when and where.
Exactly. Yep.
Perfect. That's perfect. Can we, Mr. Ricker, is your agenda, you know, you've, you've got some good discussion teed up here in the job description for economic development director. Would that be a good place for us to go next? Spend a little time talking on that topic?
One, it's not my agenda. It's yours.
Well, your proposal, okay. Thank you. Thank you. But I respect your proposal because you did a good job.
I think, I think you've done a very good one at first item anyway.
Yeah. If y'all want to move on to the next one, cause it aligns with your fourth priority there of business. You know, we can go out, I've heard some, Roger said, we need to recruit someone. Well, I don't know how to recruit someone because if you recruit someone, hey, we may be hiring you, we may not. Amelia is probably not the most enticing location for somebody that's into the recruitment business and stuff, dollar wise or what have you. Do we hire someone? Yeah. Let's, let's go forward. We, we do the, the monitor thing. We do the deeds thing where that's where we got all the reaction to the finance department, whatever it's called. Taylor did that.
What is that?
Indeed, indeed.
I just.
It's a.
Oh, 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 gotcha. Oh, I'm aware now. Yeah.
It's an e-format place for business or for job applications. The key is what do you want this person to do? Uh, we going to hire somebody, give them a hundred thousand dollars a year and say, hey, by the way, come to work on Monday and by Wednesday, tell us what you're going to do to make this job work for us. Yes, we do have a job description sitting out there and all that good stuff. And that's a template for a economic developer, but it doesn't set a priority for what you're all looking for. And I think that expectations need to be known before we try to hire someone.
Yep.
I, I can sit and take that job description and I can formulate a few questions and I can bet her back and forth with three or four people and I can find the best choice of those people. But you have to know what your, I have to know what your expectations are. And I think the hiring panel for this needs to be a bit broader than it's been for say a planner or a janitor or something like that. Those are easy ones. Those are, those are worker B type jobs. This is an executive job. Typically it's, it's above my pay grade as far as I'm concerned. You know, I could see.
The only hesitation I have with what you said is I, I'm a little hesitant to, to go too far down the path of describing the specifics without that, without that person. I understand why, why you said what you said and I agree with those. I think it's, it's finding some kind of middle ground where I don't want to be too prescriptive because I want to respect the expertise of the person that I expect we're going to hire in this, in this space.
I agree with you.
It's also why I, it's also why I specifically framed my priority earlier as business development. I was trying and I don't know that I'm there yet, but, but trying to get a little more specific. Like economic development, I think can be a very, very broad category. I think specifically what we're looking for is growth of existing businesses within Amelia and addition of new businesses to Amelia. And I think a person that meets the qualifications that you have in the job description should be able to work with that kind of priority and then come up with a plan, you know, of the how. I may be wrong in that, but that's where I'm currently thinking.
I agree with that, Joseph. I would add too, that David just went off earlier on a, on a, a description of what our current staff is, homegrown, haven't been outside of Amelia to see the way things are done in big picture ways. And I think what we need in this position is someone who has been outside of Amelia and has seen how it's done and has done it. We can't afford the best, but we can afford someone who has done it. And I think our search has to be really broad, not just the monitor, not just Indeed, and potentially even, although I would hate to do it, involve a recruiter, a headhunter.
Well, I'm actually glad you brought that up. I, I was a little hesitant to bring that up as well, but you know, due to the value, how valuable I expect this position to be, and, and I think again, David framed that up nicely too. I don't want to discount the need for a recruiter. Um, I think there is some actually searching for the person versus just letting them find our ad.
Right. That's right.
If that's how you're using the term recruiter this whole, whole time as a headhunter, then I've been misinterpreting because a headhunter, the headhunter is definitely a way to go for this. We've done that in the past. Well, when Bill Whitley came as an interim, he was picked up by a headhunter to help us and he used a headhunter. We ended up with Taylor. But we had some good.
But I feel like it gives you a level of confidence. I feel like somehow even though you ended up with someone from the county, I think it gives you a level of confidence when you use a recruiter like that because you know you've done a wide, a wide search. And I don't think you've been misunderstanding, I don't think you've been misunderstanding, David. I don't think any of us actually said that. Um, and I'm not sure that we had kind of come to that conclusion before. It's just, it's just worth discussion here.
Yeah. I think, it's my opinion that we're not going to get somebody for this job from an ad or somebody who's looking for a job. We're going to be taking somebody from somebody else. We're going to have to find, we're going to have to find somebody that's employed and encourage them to come to Amelia.
And, and your price point is probably a little high, but with what you just said, we're going to take them away from someone. I've talked to some economic developers that are fairly good at what they do in some of the surrounding counties and they would be willing to look at us for this number. And they're good at what they're doing. So.
Well, I also think it'll be encouraged. I, I think it'll be exciting for some candidates too, you know, who want to actually kind of create and make a name for themselves because we're starting from such a low level of organization around this and, and limited, limited development, frankly. It is a great, it's actually a good opportunity.
Yeah. They could be a real key in, in developing the plan.
And, and you know, you gotta make me surprised. You gotta make me surprised because you don't know who works where in the county back and forth. You might be surprised by folk who are doing something like this. You know what I mean?
I do. And so maybe, yeah, maybe that's, maybe, maybe let's proceed without the recruiter or headhunter at this point, but, but acknowledge that if we don't find the person that we feel is the, the right or great candidate through our current plan, then there's an openness to look there. Not, not just settle with who we get through the first round if we, if we feel that's not the right person. Cause I don't want to spend the money on a recruiter if we don't need to spend the money on one. But I also don't want to hire someone that we don't feel is the right candidate either, just because we've got an opening.
I, I think you got a good job description, honestly.
Yep.
Yeah. I, I think you've got a good job description idea. And you know, there are, there are, there are some folk who leave this county every day and does this type of thing somewhere else and do a very good job at it, by the way.
Well, what, what do we need for our review panel? You know, you, you said it should be more than inside the office. I mean, are there any suggestions?
Yeah. And I, and I, I think, you know, typically Carla Taylor and I look at all of this stuff that comes in. And there, there's a, there's a decent brain trust there of experiences and in varying different, in varying degrees. And we do pretty well as narrowing that focus. I don't think it's, it's tough to say that have two of y'all come look at the applications too during, at the rack and stack point. That way we find out if we even in the ballpark to go forward from there or if we need to go to a headhunter. So I think if we, we run it local, uh, run it through InDeeds, see what we get back in a three-week timeframe, take a gander at those things, rack and stack and see if the pool meets our expectations. If it does, we go to the next step for her. And if it doesn't, we reach out to Jeff's, Jeff's magic bag of headhunters and, and see if we can pull someone in. If that's what you want, we can go that route.
That's pretty much what I want, but I would like to see a higher.
I think that sounds perfect.
I'd like to see a hiring committee and I would like to be on it.
I would suggest that we consider the IDA chairman on that committee as well.
Yep. Yep.
Agreed. I'm writing it, so bear with me.
Third question ought to be.
IDA chair.
Yes.
Well, it'd be the county administrator.
When we hired a finance back to 10 years.
Definitely. Yeah.
Banker, we had a CPA, we had an accountant, we had a retired business person. And we reached out, and these were all county residents. We reached out to, to do the vetting on.
I would suggest, I'd like to throw out Sam Arrington as a, as a candidate for that committee as well. I think he, you know, running one of the larger businesses in the county and one who has worked with our IDA as well. I think he could be a really good person. So I would suggest asking him if he was willing to.
So I got Roger, IDA chair, the county administrator or business leader. Sam would be a good choice. Who else?
What were the categories that you mentioned that you went over for the finance?
Uh, when we did that, we had a CPA, we had an accountant, we had a retired banker, we had a retired businessman.
You're saying that was for the finance position?
That was when we snagged Carla the first time. So that was.
I think the ones we just suggested sound similar to those, but specific to this position. That seems reasonable.
How about somebody?
I'd be careful getting too big a committee.
Probably a good idea.
Since his egg.
Somebody from Plumville.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like that.
No, the only other thing I can think of is if we had somebody that was strong in sales and indoor marketing, I mean, even, even if it was a, a member of the community, somebody that knows that area. Cause this is definitely, this position part of it's going to be almost like a salesman, you know, or, you know, they've got to market our county, sell our county. Um, I, I don't have anybody in particular, but I'm sure there are some, anybody knows somebody that might possibly consider doing it.
Well, we've got some categories to play with and, and I wrote them down. We'll, we'll work on that thought.
With the direction we just gave, I'm sure I trust you to finalize that.
The, uh, might be a week before you see it in the paper and we get it out there, but we'll get it out there. It won't be Christmas when we do this.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Parks and Rec?
My.
Go ahead, Joseph.
No, you're fine. I had a different, I, I think you're right though. Let's go that path.
What about Parks and Rec? All we hear is, there's nothing for the kids to do.
I think you give, I think you give Glenn a stab at his goals and desires and views. And if we're not real satisfied with that, we reach out to the, again, to the community for your volunteers. Give him a stab while we're looking for volunteers. See what happens.
Yeah. I would encourage, I would encourage him. I think this is a very community driven one. I would encourage him to find a way to do either a survey or forums or some way to get community inputs on that plan very, very much. But I absolutely think he's capable and would like to see him take the, the lead on it. Um, I, I don't think I have enough of the answers or anything that, to say, but he knows what, he knows what people are requesting all the time.
Yeah, that's true. There, there's definitely a lot of, of strong support within the community for Parks and Rec. But at this moment, it's unorganized support. Um, you know, it's, it's citizen here, citizen there, citizen. They're all pretty much saying similar ideas, similar things, but it's not all put together. I think that, I mean, that's a perfect job for Glenn to, I, I'm sure he, everything that we hear as individuals, he hears all the time on multiple levels. I think it would be great for him to put it all together.
And I'm just going back to what y'all said earlier about the community involvement, getting volunteers, get that advertisement out there to come forward and snag the right bodies to big picture this thing. But in the meantime, just like the sheriff, Glenn needs to start putting the pen to paper in between what he's doing and come up with what's the community want? What's realistic and what can we handle? And again, with the realization that there's 13,000 people in Amelia County, not 130,000.
Right.
Which, which gets you to.
Yeah.
Your big gems and your swimming pools and that kind of stuff.
Absolutely. Which is why I think it also needs to be like a, you know, at the five and 10-year plan. It's certainly not going, going to change overnight nor, nor should it. And, and I, you know, we usually talk about things as, as something like a five or 10-year plan. I'd say in those cases, they could even be population or finance driven, you know, that says when, you know, your milestones are more like when you get to this size population or this number of people within this age group, you know, this is what we need to be considering and that kind of thing. Because you wouldn't want to move forward just because we were 10 years down the path if we weren't growing, you know, sufficient to do that. And obviously we, we wouldn't implement it if it wasn't. I realize that.
Yeah. On these, on these things, we don't want to have the build it and they will come attitude. But, but we do want to have the build it and we're going to get them to come. We have to, we have to know how, if we're, if we're growing something for future populations, we need to have a plan to get that population here.
Mike, Mike. And also a strong partnership with the schools too, because there's a co, co-use of a lot of facilities potentially with, with the schools. And I, and I think that's a very important piece of the financial aspect. Glenn personally is great about that particular aspect too, because of his dual roles and interests. So, sorry, Roger, go ahead.
No, I was gonna, I was gonna say something similar. He is definitely tuned into all the things that exist for Parks and Rec, but I don't want to limit our thinking and our planning on what we have and just expanding a little bit on what we have. We ought to be looking at, not, not throwing it out and starting from scratch, but is there something big that we could do to get us down the road faster than just band-aiding things and, and stretching things, if you know what I mean? And no, not my 50 acre plan, David. That's not what I'm talking about.
You're, you're exactly right.
I just, I just don't want him to come back again and say, give us a million dollars for 10 years and then we'll do something with it. We, we need something more detailed than that.
Well, and we need something a little more detailed than, hey, we need lights on this field. We need lights on that field. That kind of mess too.
Glenn understands. I think Glenn, now don't sell him short. I don't, I think Glenn understands when you want, if you want a strategic plan, I think he's got some common sense enough to know exactly what a common, what a, what a strategic plan is. But also man.
Okay, great.
I'm not, not.
I agree.
Roger is right that, that Amelia has tend to, we seem to have liked to band-aid things. Just a little, little touch here and a little touch there. And over time, it's a lot of money spent and you really, you really haven't gained anything. Cause you just, it's a little fix here, a little fix there and everything's still halfway done. You could have pulled all the money, done something big and had something really nice. So.
Yeah, it's a, it's a need those.
Yeah. And that's why I think it's not selling Glenn short. It's actually doing what Sean, what Sean's saying. It's, it's giving him direction and freedom from the board that says, we're not looking for that kind of thing. So I don't think it's about selling him short in any way. I think we're trying to give him direction. Granted, he's not in the room, but, but I know Taylor will pass, will pass that along well. Granted, he's not in the room, but, but I know Taylor will pass, will pass that along well.
Great.
All right.
This is real progress.
We've come a long way in a short time. But that is, I'd like to see them. This, this has not been in vain. I, I had some problems with the structure on the front end, but I think that this has come together pretty good.
Okay. I have one question on a little different path. I, um, have been unable to find the agenda or the one handout, which was the proposed job description on our county website. Um, Taylor, do you mind taking that as an offline thing? I'm, I'm pretty confident it's not there. I'm, I'm in the 2020 agendas section and there's, there's nothing except the regular July meeting agenda that's been out there. I think we need to make sure the workshops are there. It's like, for example, you know, as we're talking through these items, any, um, any citizens who are watching us live or will watch the recording, it's really hard for them to understand what we're talking about when they can't see the, the items.
Is this being YouTubeed? I, I messaged Sean and asked him, but he didn't answer me. Because I was getting some texts that people couldn't find it on YouTube.
I think because this is a work session, it's being recorded, but it wasn't YouTubeed live.
Oh, I.
I was telling people it's going to be YouTubeed live.
I have too.
Yeah. We need to do it in the future.
So the recording will be placed on our YouTube channel though?
We can place that on the YouTube channel, sure. That, uh, it's a, it's an extra step when you're doing it live and it takes significant more management. So we really not planned on anything other than board meetings.
Well, let's just be clear going forward. Yeah, I don't, I'm okay if the workshop isn't live out there as long as the recording gets there. Um, that's a personal opinion. I, I'd be fine the other way too, but that's a personal opinion. I, so, yeah. There's definitely a recording out there and then we've got to get the materials out there on the website. Right, there's no, there's no immediate public input, exactly. The materials have got to get on the website. I feel like every meeting, there's, there's not getting out there.
If we want, if we want community involvement.
Been a little bit different. Had I known that this was supposed to have been on there, I would have instructed Brenda Dot to have put the, uh, proposed agenda, because it still says proposed on it. I'll take the hit on that one because I didn't tell her to do it. I think she actually.
I'm not asking for a hit. I'm, I'm not asking for a hit.
I think she actually, she asked if it would be there or not, and I said no, because we're not going live, so.
Well, that's okay. I, my, my, my approach is I never want to be complaining about something behind someone's back, so I think it's appropriate just to talk through it with the group here. Because if there's a difference of opinion, then it could be shared too. We keep learning and improving as we go as a group. Yep. This was a great session.
Well, this is a good session.
Thank you, David.
It's about being a little, little bit over an hour, but we've, uh, we've done, uh, we've done, we've come down the way that I said.
Got three out of four anyway. Or at least instructions for three out of four.
Um.
Which one don't we have? I, I thought we had next steps or instructions for all four. Which one do you think we don't?
I, I know fire and rescue, we're going to have a quarterly meeting tomorrow. We're going to have that group talk about, you know, how would we develop a plan? But I, I thought there might be something a little more specific than that. I mean, we heard that loud and clear.
Oh, I, I counted that as a, I, I, that's one. I, I counted that as at least the next step forward. I mean.
Okay, so.
I don't expect overnight, I don't expect overnight on any of them, but I would say on the fire and rescue, we, we did discuss, we didn't really vote on something because that's not a workshop, but we discussed a timeline of a formal plan being developed by the end of Q1 2021. I threw that date out. I didn't hear agreement or disagreement. We probably should have gotten a little more crisp on that though.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it's a good plan. Deadlines are good. That makes you get something done. And I'll, um, I'll, I'll step up and, and try to help with the fire rescue one. Talk to Ken and see what we need to do, you know, talk to the fire board and, which does have differing opinions a lot of times and, uh, try, try to get it, get a, a feel for a direction. Um, I think that one's got to be handled just a little bit different at, at the, at the head. Um, than, than the, than the other ones, but, but it, it can be done. We can do it.
So is the, is the plan?
I appreciate that volunteer.
So would, would the plan be, because at one, at one point this evening, we talked about coming up with a countywide chief to sort of manage and take care of things. Is that the plan, how we get there? Or do we ask them what their opinion is, how we could structure things to, to make things better? Or do we want to lead with the chief?
I think a little bit of both. I think we need discussion on the need for a chief.
You let, you let them come up with the chief idea or it'd be dead to water.
Right, yeah. I couldn't have said it any better, but yeah, um.
Yeah, and I don't want to get it specific as a chief, yet personally, I don't feel like I need to get that specific to tell them we need a plan for, for future growth, you know?
Use as an example, yes.
We can plan for the future without a, without an organizational, paid organizational leader. That, yeah, there's no doubt. But if that, if that position is part of the plan, it's definitely something that, you know, to be a piece of it that we would have to look at.
Yep. All right. Where we want to be at this point and this was, this was a good one, by the way. I, I think we get a lot, a lot done. And then that you had David, Taylor?
No, sir.
What about that other thing we talked about, Taylor, that, that funding issue? Tonight or wait?
Well, we can throw it out there. We, uh, we've made some calls about.
Wayne's in the room, so remember that.
How about, let's, uh, let's do this sometime between now and the next board meeting. Let's make sure everybody has a, a one-on-one conversation about some funding issues that we've talked about or we've been looking into.
All right.
One-on-one with, with you?
One-on-one with me, yeah.
Okay, okay.
And it's not personal.
Thank you.
All right, then we, at the end of this one?
Uh, any, anytime for the next week.
Okay.
Before the next board meeting.
I'm sorry, what's that? I, I didn't hear that part.
Mr. Harris asks, does it need to be this evening or when? I'd say anytime within the next week.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
We, we will be talking about it Tuesday at 10 a.m. That'll be one of the things we'll be going over, so that might, that might catch a couple of members anyway.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Tuesday at 10 a.m., the IDA meeting.
That's correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much for, for attending and sharing and birthing the ideas that you shared and so forth. I think you, I think we did good.
Yes, thank you. I agree. And I, I think we made a lot of progress. It's the longest meeting I think we've ever had where we actually discussed ideas.
I would agree with you. Okay.
And I'm happy.
Very well spent.
I trust everybody have a good rest of the week and, uh, look forward to seeing everybody at our meeting next, uh, next week if not before.
All right. Have a good night.
Take care. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Stern.
Thank you, Mr. Stern.
He's back here. He's back behind the curtain running.
Behind the curtain. Thank you all.
All right, Mr. Gleason. Hey, you son. Don't do anything I wouldn't do. Saying that gives him a lot of leeway. I think that they work very well. I think it worked, uh, very well.
Well, exceeded my expectation.
Yeah.
It actually got something.
I think the committee idea was great. It input from different directions. It's always a good thing.
It get away.
Yeah, thank you. You did.
Fire department was a little tricky.
Yeah, you know.
I think I could say too much on that.
You've got, you've got really good volunteers, but you can't tell a volunteer you're doing it.
You're not famous.
Like for you to, to help us.
The chief's butt heads way too much to, you know, we've been fussing about it for years. It's, it's maybe a fire department. Forty years ago, it wasn't maybe, it was by itself and, and James was by itself, but it's not like that. They, nobody wants to let that go.
That's what that, uh, study was 10 years ago. So you, you either had to be together or you're in trouble.
Oh, yeah, because it was, it was.
Yeah. I don't think.
I believe it, it, it.
Are there any firsts or pices left? It might be that they.
All right, you're up there, yeah.